Congratulations on everyone newly elected and God bless you and think about the citizen. Thank you.
Thank you Sandy.
Thank you Sandy.
Yes.
I want to say thank you. Sorry, I should speak up. Our next item is roll call.
Leslie?
Here.
Paul Beagle?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Junior?
Here.
Isaac?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Paul Kiefer?
Here.
Are there any introductions that need to be made at this time?
We need to know who's on the Zoom and ask them to identify themselves.
Okay, so they can either identify themselves by pushing unmute themselves and identify, or they can just type it in the chat and let themselves know, we know.
Welcome to the new council and mayor, Tori Greggs from Boardman Chamber, B C D A.
Thank you.
Why don't you call him? If you can see, can you, I can't see you there.
Says Kevin Guest.
Okay.
Kevin Kennedy?
Okay. He said Kevin Kennedy?
Yes.
And Brandon is a guest. Brandon?
Hello.
Brandon Hammond doesn't say his last name.
Naturally.
Yeah. Anybody else up there? Who?
There was Lynn McIntyre.
Lynn McIntyre?
Lynn is an employee.
Okay.
This is Lynn McIntyre, building official. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can't figure out if I turned my camera on.
Anybody else?
Melissa Kiefer.
Oh, Melissa Kiefer. That's a picture, profile picture. Yes, thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's cool. Let's see, Monique McMillan, I know who she is. She's from my school.
They still need to, to, this is like roll call.
You would like them to announce themselves?
Yes, because if they were here, they would be signing in on the sign in.
Okay.
Jackie McCollum.
Monique McMillan, you are asked to acknowledge yourself.
Her, her mic is off.
Yeah, her mic is off.
She has the ability to unmute herself.
Jackie McCollum is here.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, it's Monique McMillan. She's from my school.
Who?
The nation's, that's Isaac's wife.
Yes, and I see Adam Cole.
Yeah, Adam Cole's there.
Okay, that looks like.
Anything else? After introductions are done, we need to do the financial report ending December 31st, 2020.
In, in your pocket, there was a financial report and the only thing I would point out in it is that, I should have gone through here before. I gave you yours. You know what we need to figure out before the next meeting is how to show stuff like that up on the, on the screen.
Yeah, I think you just have to present it, don't you?
Yeah, just show you screen.
Yeah.
Anyway, a million of that money. If, if you look in the general fund, which is, we numbered them, we put letters at the top of the columns, A, B, a blank, C, E, E, and then it, on the next line, it's sort of like when you get down to total revenue, it lets you know that you take column B plus column C and that's what will go into column D. So what I wanted to point out was in the 100 general fund, this in December, which would be the, the blank column, because we have beginning cash, then cash, then in the revenue received for December is a million three hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four and a, a million, whatever I said in my notes, two hundred and three hundred, a million three hundred thousand came from the Cres board. So we'll, and a hundred and sixty-five thousand is dedicated to the police department and the other million, one is for, we'll put it either in the street reserve or the general reserve so we can spend it this coming year.
I'm sorry, I'm not following where you're talking on this report.
You have this report, right?
Yeah.
We're on the general where it says 100 on the left.
Right, I got that.
And going over to the revenue received this month?
Which would be the third.
The third column over.
The first.
The one million three hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's an unusual figure is the reason I'm pointing it out.
Okay.
Because we do not generally get a million dollars at one time.
Okay.
Not even, not even in our taxes.
I understand, you know, you explained that well, but I don't, I don't see where you said the hundred and sixty-five thousand goes to the.
It's not broken, it's not broken down here.
That's why I didn't find it.
Yeah.
That's why you didn't find it. That's why I.
And 1.3.
So, and the rest is just, you can see the income from the building fund and then we had some money in reserves. So I think that was my only thing I wanted to point out was that you have a nice surprise this month.
Is that everything?
That's everything.
Anybody else have some questions about it?
Just how is Marta?
I thought I'd just seen her join. No, is that not her?
No, that's Matilda Ritter.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who that is though.
So anyway, she's doing well. The baby is still in the hospital, so she's driving to the tricities twice a day, but the baby should come home before long and, yeah. Be good news.
Are there any other questions about the the financial statement? I haven't heard none. I need to, we need to pass the financial statement.
I will move past the December 31st and year financial statement.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Will you would like a roll call? Okay. Do I call their names?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Leslie? Yeah. Paul?
Yes. We got two calls.
I hate to say mayor or county.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes. Perfect. Just like, just like school keeper. All right. Financials are taking care. Formal proceedings, public hearing, P A P A dash zero one, 2020. At this time, I need to close the city council meeting at seven nineteen P M. And at this time, I need to open up the meeting at seven nineteen for the public hearing, P A P A zero one, 2020, zone change request. As far as summarizing the rules of conduct of the hearing, we're going to adhere to the same rules of conduct that we have when we are in the council session. So if you have something to say, wait to be called on it, yourself to be notified and I'll acknowledge that the person can speak. Call for abstention. Are there, is there anybody that needs to feel like they need to abstain from this proceeding? Objections of, to the jurisdiction. I need to find out if there are any objections to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear the matter. Having hearing done, I will continue. At this time, I will go to the staff report and recommendations, which I think is very. You are on, Barry.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. On August 28th of 2020, David Jones, on behalf of the Columbia River Development, submitted an application for a zone change for tax lot number sixteen hundred of Morrell County Tax Map for North 25 East nine C C. His property is currently zoned tourist commercial and is a parcel of nine point two four acres. His existing zones are the proposed request would create seven point four one acres of manufactured home parks, sub district zoned land and one point eight three acres of light industrial zone land. This application has actually had two public, one public notice went out and it was rejected by D L C D. So a second notice had to go out for another date and it was heard on October 21st of 2020 and post, and I forget the term. It was continued because of the amount of comments that we received quite literally within an hour and a half or two hours of the meeting. So it was continued to November 17th, I think it was. And the planning commission heard it and they came to, they had one planning commissioner that abstained because the app, the applicant had contacted her and, and she didn't feel appropriate to vote on the matter. So we ended up with a full commission, but we ended up with a deadlock vote at three three with the abstention. With this request requiring a change of the zoning and comprehensive plan map, it will be processed as a type four legislative procedure requiring a public hearing at planning commission level and a public hearing at the city council level. In accordance with the Boardman Development Code, Chapter 4.1 subsection 4.1600, the subdivision of the acreage will be in accordance to Chapter 4.3 Land Divisions and Lot Line Adjustments of the, of the B D C. With this decision being a type four procedure, it must also be in compliance with Chapter 4.7 Land Use District Map and Text of the B D C. Other relevant chapters of the code, which are reviewed during this decision process include Chapter 2.1 Residential District, Chapter 2.2 Commercial District, Chapter 2.4 Light Industrial District, Chapter 3.1 Access and Circulation, Chapter 3.2 Landscaping, Street Trees, Fences and Walls, Chapter 3.3 Vehicle and Bicycle Parking, Chapter 3.4 Public Facility Standards and Chapter 4.10 Traffic Impact Study. The staff report will be the review of the relevant portions of these B D C chapters to this particular request. The report is highlighted in green where the application can or will meet the development code criteria. It will highlight in yellow areas of subjective decisions for the, for the council based on the evidence presented and it will highlight in red any places the apps, the application would be in direct violation of the B D C criteria. Chapter 2.1 on manufactured home park sub district. The layout of the park and building area are, are by state of Oregon statute and administrative rules, subject to the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling Park Specialty Code concerning size of lots and public services for each lot. And there is no current application for a manufactured home park. This zoning will be available for a manufactured home park in a buildable lands inventory. It will be the only, it will be the only property zoned as such. There are currently only five point nine seven acres and two, in two acres, which was going to be with the proposed Papa two dash 2020, which has been pulled from the from consideration by the applicant. The application could allow seven point four one acres for a manufactured home park if approved by the commission and the city council. Chapter 2.2 Commercial District, the tourist commercial district is in particular contain the criterion for the tourist commercial, commercial district is intended to provide services to the public traveling Interstate eighty-four. Uses such as restaurants, gas stations, retail markets, motels and similar uses are allowed outright. The four point eight acres would be part of the buildable lands inventory. The, this application would remove seven point four one acres of tourist commercials on property from the buildable lands inventory. This would represent nineteen point six percent of the total of thirty-seven point seven acres of tourist commercial today. Light industrial, this application would remove one point three acres of tourist commercials on property from the buildable lands inventory and would represent four point eight percent of the three hundred and seventy-seven point seven eight acres of light industrial. Access and circulation, the application will be required to adhere to the provisions of the Boardman Development Code chapter before any construction would be allowed. And that would include a traffic study before any construction would be allowed. Landscaping trees and fences and walls. This application will be required to meet Chapter 10 of the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling and Park Specialty Code 2002 Edition. Vehicle and bicycle park, parking, Chapter 3.3. This application will be required to meet Chapter 10 of the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling and Park Specialty Code 2002 Edition. Public facility standards. City services such as water, wastewater, stormwater. As there is no development associated with the application request, this is moot as Chapter 3.4 would be applied at the time of the development. The applic, the application will be required to meet the provisions of the chapter prior to any construction commencing. Traffic impact study, same thing, the traffic impact study will be required at the point of before any construction commencing. Goal, the comprehensive plan goals. Goal one is citizen involvement. The city has posted the property published in the East Oregonian mailed to all required and interested parties, public notice on this request on three separate occasions. And this application has met all of the policies in Chapter one of the comprehensive plan. This application is within the policies of Chapter two, land use planning of the, in Chapter two of the comprehensive plan. Agricultural check goal three. Chapter three, this chapter does not apply to the city of Boardman because we don't have any exclusive farm use land. Chapter four, forest lands, this chapter does not apply to the city of Boardman. And goal five, natural resources, scenic and historical areas and open spaces. This application is within the policies of Chapter five of the comprehensive plan because we have no identified natural resources. Goal six, air, water and land resource quality. This application is within the policies of check, chapter six of the comprehensive plan. Goal seven, areas subject to natural hazards. There are no identified natural hazards or policies within the city of Boardman. This application for recreational needs, goal aid or chapter eight, this application is within the policies of chapter eight of the comprehensive plan. Goal nine, economic development. After thorough review of the application in chap, in chapter nine of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan, and in particular, economic policy number two, which states, quote, encourage tourist commercial activity near a Interstate eighty-four, this application would not be within the policy. In review, staff has looked into relative land values of the proposed use manufactured home park sub district and one point three acres of light industrial. The current zoning tourist commercial sub district. For this review, staff assembled moral county tax valuations for two manufactured home parks and for re, and for retail services, triplex, a motel and a truck stop, all for, all fitting the tourist commercial code parameters. The manufacturer home district range evaluation is eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents per acre to one hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-seven and twenty-two cents per acre. The light industrial is forty-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven point fifty-five per acre to four hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty per acre. The tourist commercial district range is seven hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety-seven per acre to two million four thousand and six, four hundred and six thousand nine hundred and six dollars per acre. So there's quite the drop off in, in potential value and tax dollars to help support some of the transportation issues that will be created on, with the commercial. Goal ten, housing, review of Chapter 10, policies. Policy number 11, the city shall encourage residential development within the city limits in areas which are appropriate for urban development. The rest requested manufacturer home district is residential, which is usually located in the residential district. The city has in excess of two hundred acres residentially loaned zone land and nearly two hundred acres of future urban zone land, which residential is the underlying preferred use. Goal 11, public facilities. We have the facilities, water and wastewater to be able to service a development of, in the manufactured home park sub district. However, the, the streets are another matter, but the public facilities, the application could be, is within the policies of Chapter 11. Chapter 12, this application will be subject to traffic studies and is project, projected to trigger actions in interchange area management plan. Estimated number of trip ends build out is approximately eight hundred and eighty trip ends per day, which seems a little high, but that is what the Boardman Development Code has as a standard. The app, this application will be subject to the interchange area management plan provision for connector streets to provide adequate egress alternate to Southwest Front Street. This request will also be subject to the transportation planning rules of the state. The valuations listed in goal nine section of this report indicate revenues of the requested manufacturer home sub district and light industrial district would fall short of meeting the required mitigations of, of streets needed. Goal 13, energy conservation. The application is within the policies of Chapter 13 of the comprehensive plan. Urbanization. The application is well aligned with the policies in Chapter 14. And let's move just straight through the preliminary findings of fact. To the findings of fact, public notice was posted in East Oregonian and mailed to all required interested parties on July 30th, 2020, for an August nineteen twenty twenty public hearing. Number two, D L C rejected the notice as incomplete, so no hearing was held. Number three, the applicant, application is consistent with relevant criteria to manufactured home park sub district subsection, but two point one point five hundred of the Boardman Development Code. Four, this is, application is consistent with and will be subject to Chapter 3.1 of the code. The application, number five, the application is consistent with and will be subject to Chapter three, vehicle and bicycle parking upon development. Number six, the application is consistent with and will be subject to Chapter four point 10, traffic impact study upon development. This application is consistent with Chapter one of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. It is consistent with Chapter two of the comprehensive plan. Chapter three is not applicable. And number 10, check, Chapter four is not applicable. Number 11, the act, this application is consistent with Chapter five of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. The app, number 12, the application is consistent with Chapter six of the comp plan. Number 13, there are no identified natural hazards in Chapter seven of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. Number 14, the application is consistent with Chapter eight of the comp plan. Number 15, the application is not consistent with Chapter nine of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. And number 16, this application is not consistent with Chapter 10 of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. Number 17, the application is consistent with Chapter 11 of the comp plan. Number 18, the application is not consistent with Chapter 12 of the Boardman Comp Plan. This application is, this number 19, the application is consistent with Chapter 13 of the comp plan. Number 20, the application is consistent with Chapter 14 of the comp plan. And 21, chapters 15 through 19 are not applicable to the city of Boardman. Twenty-two, D L C, D L C D notice of alteration to proposed change received, posted to Papa Online at D L C A website on September 16th, 2020. Public with notice was sent on October one of 2020 to all affected property owners and agencies. Number 24, property was posted with public notice on October 21, or October one of 2020. Public notice, number 25, public notice was posted for public reader boards on October first. Number 26, public notice was posted on the city of Boardman website on October first. Public notice was published in the East Oregonian October 6th and staff report posted on city of Boardman website on October 14th of 2020. On, number 29, on October 21st, 2020, the day of the public hearing of Papa one dash 2020, numerous comment letters were received from a host of common commenters, including the Department of Land Conservation and Development, Fair Housing Council of Oregon, Morrell County Board of Commissioner and Commissioners, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. With the late hour of the comments, Commission Chair Kane asked the commission if they would consider postponing the hearing and the commission felt it would like to address the comment letters. Number 30, Commissioner Jimenez made a motion to continue the hearing to November 18th to 2020 at 7:00 P M. And the motion was seconded by Commissioner Cole. Chair called for the vote and it was passed unanimously by the five commissioners in attendance. Number 31, on November 18th, 2020 at 7:05, Chair Kane called the hearing back into the order on Papa one dash 2020 with all seven commissioners in attendance via Zoom. Number 32, Chair Kane went through the process for the hearing and when he called for abstentions, Commissioner Sealy said she would abstain and she was, as she was contacted by the applicant and felt it was appropriate, inappropriate for her to vote on. Said she would abstain and she was, as she was contacted by the applicant and felt it was appropriate inappropriate for her to vote on this matter. Chair come. Number thirty-three Chair Kane completed the hearing checklist. And commission and the commission discussed Commissioner Sealy's reasons for her absence abstention. As all of the other co- commissioners had been contacted by the applicant. So she was not without knowledge. She was not with knowledge which the other commissioners also had. So ex parte communications did not apply to to Commissioner Sealy. Number thirty-four, the hearing then proceeded and the amended staff report. Was delivered with comments received and addressed in the staff report. Number thirty-five, the applicant then made his case, uh, on the zone change request during his testimony. He mentioned that he had reached out to all of the commissioners about this request. Chair, number thirty-six, Chair Kane closed the hearing at eight P M. Number third, uh, number thirty-seven, the commission then deliberated the request for this zone change of nine point two four acres. Tourist commercial land to be changed to seven point four one acres of manufactured home park sub district. And one point eight three acres of light industrially zone land. After the deliver, after deliberation, the commission entertained a motion. To approve Papa one dash twenty twenty, which was seconded by Chair. Was seconded and Chair Kane called for a roll call vote. Commissioner Jimenez, yes, Commissioner Tenai, no. Commissioner Breezy, yes, Commissioner Navarro, yes, Commissioner Cole, no. Chair Kane, no, and with Commissioner Sealy abstaining, leaving a three-three vote with the abstention. And then we posted public notice for this hearing on December sixteenth, meeting our requirements. To have, uh, twenty-one days before the meeting. Um, this application for a zone change in subdivision. Uh, but nine point two four acre parcel into. Uh, seven point four one acre tourist commercial to manufactured home park. And one point three eight three acre parcel from tourist commercial to light industrial. Non-development application is pending at this time. Any development plan which comes forward will be held to the relevant developments code chapters. And standards at the time of the application. This application was heard on November eighteenth, twenty twenty by the full planning commission. And voted three yes, three no, with one absent abstention, which is a deadlock vote. And it has been moved to this, um. There's several areas, areas of subjective decision making for the city council to consider. Most of the areas are associated with the policies found in Boardman Comprehensive Plan chapters nine, ten and twelve. Where there are policies that simply aren't met. Any questions?
Any questions for Barry? Doesn't sound like there are Barry, there's no questions for your staff report. Is that everything for you Barry?
Yes.
Okay. All right, after the staff report, I will go now to the proponent case. Proponent now have permission to, uh, speak. Good evening, Councilman. Um, okay, so first of all, does anybody have any questions about for me? I know you don't have any questions for Barry, what about for me? Nothing? Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet, great, well, let me, let me pass out some stuff here for you guys. So I want you to know what we plan on doing, okay? If you can take one and just pass along. This is a basically a Google drawing of the. Proposed land or what we're, what we're working with. And this is what we plan on doing with it. So, um, we all know that there's a, there's a housing crisis here in Boardman. Okay, we always, we all know that we need all types of housing, high income, middle income and low income. I, I own currently own a mobile home park, as most of you know. Frontier Court, and I get about four requests every week for people wanting to buy a home, rent a home, whatever it is. They're just desperate for low income housing. Now my rents are about three hundred and forty dollars a month, three hundred and forty to three hundred and sixty dollars a month. That's opposed to Portview, which I think is starting at eight fifty for a windbitter. Okay, so it's definitely an option that you can, you, you don't have to be on government, government assistance or anything like that, you can actually afford it. What I propose is to put in a part of it, the front part, so bordering the freeway. We would put in storage units to kind of act as a buffer between the freeway and the and the mobile home park. And then in the mobile, in the manufacturing part, on that part, we put sixty units and they would be pretty well spaced, so. Pretty good sized locks, lots of, of, about a thousand square feet underneath what a major or a regular lot is. For a housing, housing district, so you can put double wides there, you can even put triple wides in. Okay, so they're gonna be pretty good sized lots. Um, sixty of them would, and we're, we plan on doing it in three stages. So twenty twenty twenty. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, I mean, it's, we're just trying to to cater to the demand. We've tried looking at other properties elsewhere, all over Boardman, but I've been. I've been here for eight years now and, or nine years. And this is the first property we've actually been able to acquire. So it's not been easy. Um, and that's pretty much it for, for, I mean, if you, you have any questions for me? I don't think we get to ask questions at this time.
Okay.
It's just where you present your case and then the the proponents will, or the opponents will. Okay, then let me, let me talk a little bit about nine, ten and twelve then, okay? So the nine, chapter nine economic needs, I think the first what we need to do is we need to have. We need to have housing before we have, we can have a commercial in here. We already have tons of commercial and we need to bring that housing up, so I think that it actually does. Fall within the the chapter nine of the needs. As far as chapter ten, I mean, it's affordable housing, that's all about what chapter ten is about, is affordable housing. So absolutely, in my opinion, it falls within that, that chapter as well, the parameters of that chapter. And then in chapter twelve. We've said that, of course, we will do a traffic study, but we've also, if you notice on that drawing. Around the edge of that property, there's that black space, that's going to be all road dedicated to the city. So that's a sixty foot easement for the city road to do a loop road, to do whatever they need to do. To make sure that there's plenty of of traffic and to account for for future developments as well. And making sure that ODOT is happy with us. So in that case, I do think it also. Falls within the the needs and requirements of of chapter twelve. And that's pretty much everything I have to say. Be sure to leave one. Thank you. Man? Okay. Are there any opponents that would? Huh? Going to sit here? Can I sit down? Yes, you can sit down. Are there any opponents that need to, would like to speak to this at this time? Having hearing done, there really is no cra- cross examination. Are there any public agencies that would like to speak at this time? Having none of those, uh, since nobody is opposing it at this time, there's obviously no rebuttal for you. So that goes back.
Mayor, Mayor Keeper?
Yes.
Uh, there, the only, uh, comments that we, that we received. Uh, were from Or- Oregon Fair Housing Council. And, um, Department of Transportation. And the, on this particular application. Department of Transportation, Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Oregon Fair Housing, uh, Council of both. So. That's the only, and and they weren't necessarily opposition, they were. Trying to figure out the same things we were trying to figure out.
It looks like there's somebody that would like to speak, um, somebody named with Jay.
Okay, Jay, you have, uh, permission to speak?
Yes, this is Jonathan Tomlin. Uh, I would just like to read over everything as far as the developments for this. And I just, this is, it, this wasn't on the agenda and I would just like to read everything, uh, to be fully adept of what's going on with this.
I guess, so I guess I don't follow your question.
So I, was this on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so where's the documentation for that? I'd love to see it.
The documentation for this meeting?
Yeah, what, no, yeah, for the, for the loop road and all the Oregon ODOT, uh, information about this.
There, there isn't anything as far as the loop road or ODOT. As far as I'm aware of.
Okay.
So I'm not quite sure where you're coming from, because right now the, this public hearing is about the. The manufactured home park that he is proposing to put in.
Okay, well, I, I'm sorry, I guess I was, I heard loop road and, uh, ODOT and I was just confused at. The, uh, with the material and documentation that went with that.
Oh, now I think you're thinking of something else.
Okay.
Is what I think you're thinking about, uh, Mr. Tomlin.
Okay, so, sorry about that.
Hey, not a problem, thanks for the, thanks for the input and for being there.
Well, and this is a zone change.
Right.
Just so you're clear, this is about a zone change, it's not about.
Roads and it's not about, it's just, so, Mr. Tomlin, you understand where our proceedings are about. Re- uh, changing a zone from, uh, what is, what was it? It was. Tourist commercial to a manufactured home and light industrial.
Well, and and for me, the future of what this could mean as far as setting an establishment with the zoning. Requirements, because there's others zoning requirements that other people get to do that we don't. And that's why I'd like to read all the materials that that on this to make sure that it, it fits in with everything involved.
Okay.
Mister Mayor?
Just shared, yes, Barry.
Um. I'm pretty sure that the staff report for this was, uh, is is on the website.
It is? Okay. So, Mr. Tomlin, Barry said that this, this staff report is on the website? All right. I mean, uh. Oh. Are you back?
Yeah, yeah, I'm back, I, I, all right, well, I haven't read it and I apologize for that, but, uh. When we start saying those words, it, it, the, the future of what it does as far as the dominoes effect. For, for all parties involved is, uh, because it's not just, just for one entity, it's for everybody involved as far as those zoning requirements. For future usage throughout the city.
I'm glad you're listening, I'm glad you're, uh, paying attention, so appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, you're welcome, thank you, was there, was there any other questions up there? Okay, is there anything you, the, the question obviously wasn't referring to, so you probably don't have a rebuttal, do you? If anybody has any questions for me up here, that's pretty much it. Okay, uh, the questions and the answers will come when we go back into the public hearing, so.
Jackie McCauley posted the link in the chat, Jonathan, that you can access that.
That's what they're talking about right now.
Hey, you're, you're unmuted Barry. I need to take a picture of that right there, that was a great look. So, Mr. Tomlin, there's the link for the website and feel free to take a look at that. And at this time at seven fifty-four, we'll close this public hearing. We'll go back into our Barika Bean City Council meeting at seven fifty-four. And with that being said, we'll just go into and we can, uh, talk about. This is the time we can ask questions about what's going on in this public hearing. So if anybody has any questions that they would like to ask. Mr. Jones, now is the time to do it.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to ask a question, please.
Okay, Sandy, it's yours, if you want to, up there if you want, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, David. I have a question on what would be the years of the mobile home that you will be putting in?
Anything eighty-five and above.
Eighty-five or above?
Yeah, probably, probably newer, but all of them, all of them will be completely remodeled before we put them in. Or as we, I'm sorry, they will be completely remodeled before they are sold. So. So, yeah, so eighty-five is is basically where you don't have any of the asbestos, you don't have any of. Of the, um, what's the, they're, they're a lot more energy efficient. They're, they're easier to move, you can't even, so for example, if for a seventy-six or something like that. They have asbestos in them, they have, they're just not a good trailer, they got really, really thin walls and they are a nightmare to move. Um, they're not even allowed on the roads, actually. Legally, but, um, people still move them. So we were thinking eighty-five and older, or eighty-five and newer, I apologize, preferably in the nineties to the two thousands. And all would be remodeled before they come in.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you, um, Mr. Jones, I just have two questions for you, in that community development, do you have any plans for CCNRs and or HOAs?
I do, well, HOAs, no, but I, there will be, so, for example, it is a mobile home park. So there will be a monthly rent and so the, for that monthly rent, the roads will be taken care of, the. The, the grounds will be taken care of, except for every, every space, of course, is that person's space. It is their responsibility to take care of it, but we'll be taking care of the common areas, so the parks, the garbages, garbage areas, the roads, things like that. So.
So it's.
So HOA is, it's kind of like a HOA, but the, the HOA is acts a little bit differently in a, in a mobile home park. So the manager is kind of the head of the HOA. And then the HOA fee is the actual rent.
Okay, so therefore it doesn't sound as it might be any standards for. Anything that should occur on the private property?
Oh, there's, there's tons of standards, standards, yeah, so every, every manager, every park. Has its own set of rules and regulations that the residents have to abide by. So that, and that, there, there, there's, I mean, there's tons of rules that. That they will have to abide by, to make sure that the, the community works as a whole. So if there's any disturbances or anything like that, it is the responsibility of the manager owner to deal with those in, in a very immediate way.
Okay, thank you, one more question, quickly, uh, you mentioned earlier that it took some time to purchase this property. What prevented you from purchasing other property in residentially zoned areas?
That's a, that's a great, well, first of all, there is no property available that people want to purchase and then want to, want to zone that way. So, um, very, so there's, there's a few major landowners in the area. And we have approached every single one of them and offered them up to asking price over asking price. And they've all been saying, no, we're gonna hold on to the land for a little while for, for clearer waters. And so, so it's been really, really difficult to, to find anybody that would actually sell this any property. And we, we've put in several bids, we've put in, it's been a nightmare.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, Councilor Ben Legal, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Mister Jones. Have you read or are you aware of the DOT requirements for frontage road? And if you are, then where is your secondary road going to be tying into?
So for frontage road, well, there's, it's gonna be a little bit different in the future plans. The, for the future plans, so what we're trying to do is this is just a preliminary plan, okay? We have not gone through the, the actual, we're taking it to a mechanical, or a. It's an engineer and having them map out everything, we haven't done that. And when we do, those will, everything, every regulation, everything, 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 will be put into those plans. And we will meet every single regulation, we have to, we already want to go. So I don't know, I'm not a. So I don't know, I'm not aware of any Frontage Road regulations.
Yeah.
I'm probably more aware of those than I am.
Yeah, access and...
Whatever we need to do, we will do.
I'm referring to the access and entrance off of, onto the interstate, there's the requirement for that, also...
And that, that has to do with the Loop Road that they concreted. And that's why it's, that's why it's all the way around there. So we, the Loop Road is required, at least the city requires, the future Loop Road will have to be a sixty-foot easement. And so we've looked at where best, where, I've been out there with, with Barry, and, and we've kind, I've kind of come up with an idea of where I think would best, best be suited. And that's why we've taken all that property on the ends and made it basically, that's a potential Loop Road diet. It very well may not be there, it may be in a different place, and we will accommodate that with, with the city. We're willing to work with the city in any way we can.
Thank you. One more question concerning the, the DPA and the UEC and the power lines and the restrictions that you should incur, provided you extend your access point south to hook up to Oregon Trail.
Yes.
Are, are you familiar with that?
I am, great.
Thank you, sir.
So if, if, do you want some more information on that, or?
I, I'm just curious as how you would tie that in with restrictions of UEC and the, the DPA line.
Well, if you'd like to get in contact there as well, I can tell you the, the history of that with DPA. But I, or I can tell you now, whatever you'd like.
I, I think the rest of the senators would love to hear that.
Okay, so, we did have a, we did a DPA in back, or we did a, a road in back of our place, the city did, when, when I was on city council, in hopes that we could extend that to Oregon Trail. Unfortunately, DPA came back to us and said, no, the power lines are too long and too low, so you can't actually make that road straight through, you're gonna have to go into, into a different place. Now, there are several positions in those power lines where the power lines are lined up, okay? And where the power lines are lined up, if you go close enough to the power lines, you have the highest height, those lines are going over. And that's where you can put that, that road going through. So, for example, on the, let's see, on the east side of Main Street, that road is now gonna have to kind of snake over to Oregon Trail. And we're hoping there's not gonna be so much snake in this road. Did that, did that answer your guys' questions, hopefully?
How would it snake? I, I have a map there, and this is where it comes.
So Oregon Trail, we're done here.
Yep.
So this will be right here, here's those three points, right?
Right.
And basically go right through that.
So you kind of angle it, so it comes right through there. Thank you, sir.
That is my proposal, and that could change depending on what the city wants to do.
Is that everything, Mr. Regal?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Prophet?
I'm ready. I'm gonna review the, the schedule.
But it's, it's good. I'm super excited for, for everybody's time.
I do have a question.
Yeah, speak louder, Brenda.
I have a question for you.
Use your teacher voice, please.
David, do you have a sort of plan for how you're going to develop the land, for the timeframe you're looking at, how quickly you can handle this, where you'll start, which homes you'll fill in first?
That's a great idea, or that's a great, great question. So there, do I need to repeat the question so everybody can hear?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I couldn't hear it, please.
Okay, so the question was, do I have a plan as far as where am I gonna put the first homes? And where am I gonna, you know, what am I gonna do, where am I gonna do the first, the first phase and all that stuff? I have a preliminary plan of what I think it's gonna look like, but that is subject to change depending on what the city wants me to do. So that could, for me, I would love to put those, those storage units in first, and then put twenty homes after that, and, you know, just kind of work it from here, work it from the, the north to the, yeah, north to the south. That very well may not be what the city wants me to do, or what the planner doesn't want me to do. Because remember, this is gonna go before a professional, professional engineering company, and they're gonna tell me, okay, this is better suited, if you wanna do three phases, this is what you're gonna do. I, I'm just gonna probably do a lot of consulting.
Are you thinking of three phases?
I am thinking of three phases, yeah. Yeah, because I don't think, there's no way that I can bring in sixty homes like that, it's just not gonna happen. So this will be over probably a three, four year, four year process.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Sandy Toms again.
Yes, you have permission to speak.
Thank you. David, are you aware, or is any of the council other members aware of the possible income to the city or to the county compared to commercial property?
Yes, and it was in Barry's report as well.
Yeah.
I didn't get that report, so I guess I'll have to, to download it.
If you, I can answer that as well. If you put a motel there, or, or, or a gas station, or a truck stop, or whatever, you're gonna get a lot more income for the city. I'll be flat out straight, that's true, that's the truth. The thing is, we just put a hotel in. And I don't see us, and I know Love's is planning on putting another gas station right there. So the only thing that we can really do with that land that is potential in the next ten years is putting possibly some, some shops there, and I've definitely considered that on the, on the border, bordering Front Street. But as of right now, there's still no demand for that. So, so commercial, unfortunately, commercial space right now, there's just not in order, there's just not much demand for it, like small commercial retail shops. So that's why I'm thinking for right now, we put in something that actually there is demand for, which are storage units and which are mobile home, or manufactured homes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I got a question. I'm looking at this front street, and there's only one way in and one way out. And you said something about a Love's truck stop, a Love's gas station on that corner where...
No, 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 did I say Love's? I'm sorry.
That's what I heard.
I apologize, that was, that was a misspeak. It's, the gas station is already there.
Well...
Yeah, so, what is it called?
Shell, yeah. It's Shell.
Yeah, so Shell.
So my concern is, that, that station's probably gonna go away, or something's gonna happen there. I mean, common sense to me says that it probably will. There's one way in and one way out, and if you're building eighty homes, can that street handle that?
And that's why we need the traffic study. Yeah, that's why the traffic study needs to be done.
And who's gonna pay for all that?
I would be paying for the traffic study unless the city wants to, you know?
No, I mean, for the, for the upgrades of the road and for...
Once again, Mayor, that has to be worked out with, with the developer and the city. You know, it's, that, that will not be used necessarily, well, it will be used by the tenants, you know, but, and of course, we will work out, we will put the, whatever we can do with the city.
Having eighty, there's gonna be, I mean, you know as well as I do how much traffic will be in there.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be sixty units, and there will be traffic. I don't think it's anywhere near what Barry is quoted in his...
Well, I don't know about five hundred and fifty, but let's say there's four cars, four cars per house?
No, there's only, I only allow two cars per house, but...
Councilwoman Norton, you have the floor.
There, I was just saying, in Gold's Club, it kind of talks about that, it is just saying that the revenue, whatever happens, we might end up spending some of the bills for that.
And that was, that was my concern, I was just wondering, you know, how much are we willing to pay?
Right, it'll be a little sound, you know?
With any development, there's some, there's, there's give and take. So the developer is definitely, you know, he, that, the developer needs to put in some, and...
Well, you're the developer, right?
I would need to put in some.
You're the developer. So I, I, and the lot size is, you said a thousand square feet?
It's actually gonna be thirty-three hundred square feet.
Thirty-three, so...
Yeah, so I, yeah, thirty-three, and I believe it's...
What's your lot size gonna be?
Thirty-three hundred square feet.
What by what? I'm just, probably by a hundred, I mean, thirty-three.
Probably by, probably forty-five by, by eighty, I think it is.
Forty-five by eighty?
If I'm not mistaken?
Okay.
That would be about twice the size of what Desert Springs or...
That leads to my next question.
It'd actually be very, very comparable to what Desert Springs, Desert Springs are fifty-five hundred square foot lots. According to what Leah's told me.
I think they're closer to twenty-five.
Oh, really?
I live there.
Oh, you do, yeah, yes, so you probably know better.
I think they're about twenty-five.
Okay, so twenty-five.
Are you looking at, to build the same way as Desert Springs? Or are you thinking about a similar, like, the other two trailer parks we have?
No, it would be similar, it would be more so in the line of Desert Springs.
Are we looking at streets and...
Streets, curves. Yeah, thin streets, and there will be curves, probably.
Probably?
Probably, it all depends on cost, guys. You know, if we have to...
Glenn McEntire, please? This is Glenn McEntire, building official.
All right, go ahead, Glenn, then we'll go.
Thanks, Glenn.
The manufacturer, the manufactured park code requires a minimum lot size of two thousand square feet. So he could build a lot more lots than the thirty-six hundred square feet that he's proposing.
Okay. I could, I could put in a substantial number of homes there if I wanted to. Councilwoman Pearson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you just confirm, you said that you are building sixty units total?
Fifty-nine to sixty, yes.
Okay, and that is at the thirty-three hundred square foot lot size?
It would be, well, there, there would be some that would be a little bit smaller than that, I think, I mean, under my plan, and granted, this plan will change because I will have a professional actually look at it. This is just something that I came up with. But according to mine, I'm thinking eight lots are a little bit smaller.
Okay.
And that it was to accommodate the sixty units.
And based on what Mr. McEntire just presented, if you had the opportunity to build on two thousand square foot lots, would you prefer to do that?
No, I have two thousand square foot lots in my place, no.
Okay, and then also...
If I'm putting in an RV park, yes. If I'm putting, so there's a difference between an RV park and a mobile home park, right? So if you're putting an RV park, yeah, you want small, you want small spaces. But a mobile home park, when you're putting in a unit, you wanna be able to have that, the resident there, say, listen, you know what, I don't like that single Y, I'm gonna put in a double Y. And I wanna have space for my car to still park it next, next door, you know? With a two thousand square foot lot, you have to realize that in the code, there's only, I think it's either ten or fifteen, it's ten feet that you have to have between mobile homes, ten feet. That's ridiculous. Ten feet, you don't have any, you don't have any room there. And so to have any real lot there, it's, it's just not, it's, it's crazy. So I, my proposal is to have about twenty-five to thirty feet in between those trailers.
Okay, and then the other question I have for you lastly is, did you say that you are receiving approximately four requests per month on these homes?
Yeah.
So effectively, you could have...
Not per month, I apologize, for a week, three to four per week.
Okay, so then you would be built out fairly quickly.
If I...
Why the three to four years for the phases?
Because it's the problem of finding mobile homes. So I can get mobile homes all day from the dealership, but there are gonna be a hundred thousand dollar mobile homes, or eighty thousand dollar mobile homes. And my clientele would not be able to afford that. And so the best thing that I can do is find mobile homes on my, on my own that are parks that are, they're on land, and somebody wants to build a stick-built house, and they're getting rid of that, that mobile home. Or it's in a park that the owner's saying, you know what, I don't want any single Y's anymore, I want double Y's only, so all the single Y's need to come out. So those are the places that we're looking, we're looking for those, those, those used ones. And those, we can actually sell in between twenty and twenty-five thousand as opposed to eighty to a hundred and whatever thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Regal?
The information that you're looking for concerning the traffic flow on Front Street is on the DOT. It restricts the number of vehicles that utilize that way.
Right, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue because we're so close to the freeway.
Exactly.
Hence the reason we, you're gonna need at some point a Loop Road there.
My only concern is, once you pull the trigger on this, there's, it's really hard for us to, then you're on your own to build what you want.
Not necessarily.
I mean, according to the, I mean, you, as long as you follow the guidelines, but you can technically build it any way you wanted to, as long as it fit into the guidelines.
Yeah.
And, well, I guess my, my concern is, I know that you, you stated the dates of the trailers, the trailers you want. Granted, my, my manufacturing home's a nineteen ninety-nine, so I, I, I kind of know. But once we, if this was to be approved, then you're kind of on your own, as long as it fit into the guidelines. There's, we couldn't do anything else and say, we don't like what you're doing. You could easily go in and build the same thing that we got already on the front street. And there would be nothing we could do about it. Not to say that you were doing that, but that's, that's the apprehension that I have. The other thing, question I have is, I know what it's like to look at a, well, I don't know, I don't know if this is gonna be a trailer park or a mobile home park, but I know what it's like to look at that, do we want that as a face of our city? That's the other question. I don't know what I, what my answer is.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I completely understand your concerns. One, I could, but there's always, there are a lot, I don't know, there, there's a book like this of guidelines that you have to do when you, you're putting in a mobile home park, okay? It's literally this big. They have everything outlined for you, okay? So as far as the spaces go, what you're, unfortunately, you're just gonna, I can come, but it'll be approved with planning commission as well, that preliminary thing, and they will make sure that I do it the way I have, I have presented. But you're right, I could make the lot size smaller. I could, but I don't plan to. And there's no reason for me to. I know, I know the numbers, I have a mobile home park. So I know what I can get away with and what I can't.
So we're not looking at, at another Wilson or another...
No, you're not. You're absolutely not. And as far, oh, your, your next question was presence, and that's one of the reasons why we're putting that, that, we're doing that light industrial area to make sure that it is, that there is a buffer. So coming on the freeway, people coming off that, on that off ramp, won't see it, okay? And then there will be fencing all around the park as well, so you're not gonna see that as well.
Jackie McCauley has a question.
Jackie McCauley, you have the floor.
David, my question, can you hear me?
Yeah, Jackie.
My question is, if this rezone does not happen, would you consider developing it commercially? Like the little strip mall that Subway is in, would that be something you would consider?
Probably not, and the reason is this, how long is that set vacant? So there is just not enough demand to put in a little commercial, you know, a little strip mall or whatever it is. There's, and I don't have the, I'm not, there is a limit to my funds. And putting in something like that would be extremely costly. And so to not have renters for months or even years, I, I couldn't do that.
Okay.
I would love, honestly, I would love to have just a commercial property where I can put in retail stores, and it would fill up, and we would have no problems. That would be my preference so many ways, because it's just, as far as a landlord goes, commercial property is so much less of a headache. But, but unfortunately, that is not the reality of working.
Well, I think our chamber could help you with that. My next question is about green space in your proposed park. You have a plan?
Oh, yes, 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 so what is required is you do have, have to have a park. My park, the park that I have, have green space, is actually almost twice what is required. So, and, well, it's not, it's... What is required. So they'll have a, have a nice park to play with or play on, and it'll be fenced in. It'll actually be, according to my current plan, right behind where the laundry mat is currently, we'll, we'll fence all that off, and it'll be a nice big green space back there.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is there an ordinance within the city or county on the age of a home you can bring in? He said nineteen eighty-five, that's a thirty-six-year-old manufactured home. And I'm wondering what the value of an actual nineteen eighty-five manufactured home is, even remodeled?
That's a great question. There is. Seventy-six and below, you can't, you're not, you're not allowed to bring in, okay? You're not allowed to move them. It's not that you're not allowed to bring them in, you're not allowed to move them on the, on the streets. Okay, so eighty-five, you're right, it is a thirty-six... Okay, so 85, you're right, it is a 36-year-old home. And the value of that, when we, when we get it, we usually buy them from around, anywhere from. Sometimes 5,000, sometimes 15,000, sometimes we get them for 17,000. But then we put about five, five to $6,000 into it to remodel it, and sometimes, I put in as much as 15 before on one. And get it up to par.
But the city or the, or the county does not have an actual ordinance on the age of a home that you can bring in?
76 and below, you cannot bring in.
Did you hear that answer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Did we have anybody else with some comments they'd like to share?
I'd just like to share one more thing, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Okay, Sandy, you have the floor.
My last time, I promise. Mr. Jones, you and I know each other very well for many years now, and. I appreciate that you want to provide more affordable housing. But I guess my question to you would be. Why wouldn't you think that a strip mall would not work great in Boardman? With the growth that we are getting now? And people begging for places to move businesses to at a reasonable rent? That's my question.
Yeah, great question. So how I've seen it, the vacancy rate right now is, I mean, I don't, I actually don't know what the vacancy rate is right now. But in the last five years, and there's always been several vacancies when it comes to commercial property.
It's full.
But.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to turn them off.
So, and I'm just, let's just take, for example, the, the property that has been, that is next to Subway, okay? How long has that been vacant? I think just recently, just recently, somebody went in there with a, got a liquor store, liquor shop in there, liquor store in there now, and. And is the other one vacant still? I don't know.
No, they're awful, and they have been for a while.
They actually haven't. They have three, I, I live right there, and so they, they had the construction companies that were in there for about six months, but before that, they would have been always vacant. So in the last year, or I'd say a year and a half, they've had a good portion of that that's, that have remained vacant. Like I said, they had the construction companies before these guys, and then they've got now the liquor store in there and the other one. But I just don't see the demand. If, if the demand was there, great, but the demand is not there. And regardless, even still, that, a strip mall is not going to take up that full nine acres. You can put, you can put, you can put some shops in that small little, you know, two-acre portion right there, where it's light industrial if you needed to. And then I'll be back here, if that's the case, then I'll be back here to ask for that. But hopefully it will be.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Sandy. Are there, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, hearing that, do I have a motion? Oh, we have.
We just had a comment. Luis Campos said, wouldn't it be an eyesore having them on the main road?
That was just a comment that he had.
Um, do I respond to that?
You can, absolutely, you can rebuttal that.
It's not on the main road. And it's, that's, that's why we have the buffers. I mean, yeah.
But I think, I, I'm not speaking for him, but you would be able to see the development. There, that there's a development. Whether I can see the trailers or not, I don't know. But you could definitely see the storage sheds or the development of that.
You would definitely see the storage sheds, that's why.
And I think that.
That's why, that's why that acts as a buffer. Yeah.
Got you. Having none here, is there any other questions? Did you notice any other questions up there? Do I have a motion? Yes, Councilwoman Proppa.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I actually would prefer not to vote on this until I've gone and saw the property in the daylight. You know, I would like to actually, I mean, I can see it on the map, and I know what's being talked about, and I. But the map also has sunrise at Boardman on it, and I know that's on this side of the street, on the freeway. So I feel like I would like to see the property before I'm asked to vote on it. Because I want to know how far off of Main Street is this green space and these houses behind the laundry mat? I'm wondering if that's a possibility if we post home.
Okay, what, the next meeting?
Table, yes, something.
I will make a motion that we do not allow the zoning change. For this property, with what we've heard, with the comments and questions at this time. I have a second to that motion.
Okay, we have a motion not to approve the zoning change, and we have a second. It's not the question. Is there any discussion? That anybody would like to have at this time? Since there's no question, no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of not allowing the zone changes this time, raise your hand. Five, and then one no vote, which would be Councilwoman Proppa.
You didn't ask for a no vote.
Oh, I guess.
I think there was a call.
Okay, let's do a roll call, then we'll just do that.
Okay.
You are correct, I did not ask for.
You can have this too.
That is correct.
Okay.
So we'll do a roll call.
Brenda?
I want to stay, because I'd like to look at property first. While I'm in the decision.
Katie?
Yep. Yeah, sorry.
Are you voting to?
Oh, I don't know.
Not to approve?
I am going to not approve.
So a yes vote would be not to approve.
Okay, Beagle?
Yeah.
Isaac?
Yeah.
You're here?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Yeah.
And Kiefer?
I don't vote.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
I only voted in a tie.
Nope.
No.
Just that.
You are a councilman.
Yeah, you are a councilman.
Sorry.
That's not what I read.
Yes, then you didn't read it.
Uh, are you sure about that?
I am positive.
I'm positive too, Mayor, you do vote.
I'm just reading something that I only voted as, I don't have a problem voting, I was just saying.
I, I have a.
Not in Boardman, that's, is that caveat? Not in Boardman? I vote no, or I vote yes. Excuse me.
So we have six yeses and one abstain.
Yeah. All right, so that takes care of the formal proceedings. Pre-arranged presentation, we have Kimberly Vinsy, Community Counseling Solutions Kids Mental Health Center.
And she just walked in the door. So I have some handouts, do I, and sponsor your chief?
Chief? Chief is really good at that.
So, okay, I have to leave about 10 or 15 minutes, so I'm happy to come back and answer more questions. There are three, three pages.
Right.
There we go. Good to see those of you that I haven't seen in a while, this pedagogo, always lovely, they're just a staple here. And like, if you, when you retire, I'd love to retire, just keep showing up. Free counseling tonight for all those that are new into politics, we're just like, set up out there. I brought my daughter with me, she decided to come work for my organization.
Do you have a retreat for her?
Yes. Great. All right, so I'm here to talk a little bit about a program that I've been working on for about, oh gosh, probably about five years. It is a 14-bed. Young child, I like to kind of call them littles, commonly refer to them as littles. Ages six to 11. Residential treatment, subacute treatment facility for kids who are in need of that level of care. Just to step back, I don't know if you follow this issue, issue as closely as I do, but. Oregon has had a problem for years and years with placing kids in appropriate levels of care. There's not enough foster care, there's not enough therapeutic foster care, there's not enough subacute residential or acute care in Oregon. So as a result, kids are not put in appropriate levels of care. They decompensate, they deteriorate to the point where they need a really high level of care, and then. They're held in emergency rooms for days and days and days on end. And sometimes they end up going to hotel rooms. With therapists, case managers, child welfare workers, where their warehouse, until they can't find a bed. And because Oregon doesn't have enough beds, they get sent out of state. So that's a, like a 1,000-foot view of what I call an extreme tragedy in our state for how we treat our most vulnerable. If our most vulnerable are the elderly, the disabled, and the kids. We are failing them every single day. So I apologize for my strong words, and sometimes I'm a little emotional, but. Having experienced this on different levels, it's just something that's near and dear to my heart, so I'm going to press on. 14 beds may seem like a lot, it's not, I could fill it up overnight, and probably about five facilities like this. So right now, at any given time in Oregon, there are about 75 kids that are in an emergency room that are. It's very, very difficult. You know, and everyone that's involved, but just think about being a nine-year-old in an emergency room, dead, in that sterile facility. And you can't have your family there, especially now during COVID, you can't have your family there. All of the trauma that went on for that youngster to get to that place is significant, possibly even more than what they're experiencing. They have unhealthy attachments, things that have led them there to that place, but then they're in that place that is so terrifying. So terrifying, and they sit there for days on end. So this subacute program, again, 14 beds, we first started to look at it about five years ago, and candidly, we were looking over in the Sherman County area. Eastern Oregon doesn't have at any given time 14 kids, so this facility would need to pull kids from the west side of the state. Sherman County is a little bit closer to the west side of the state. And I could give you the history, but because I'm a little short on time, that didn't work out. It wasn't for a want or a drive, it, it just didn't work out. So we started to look at Morrell County. I'm going to, like, pause for a moment. You have a huge advocate for this population in the room with Chief Stoco. I just got to put in a plug for him, he's my most favorite police chief, and I love working with him, so thank you for doing whatever you do to keep him here. You know, he's seen what I'm talking about for, I don't know, how long have you been in the force, Chief? 40 years, 30 years, 80 years?
Barely turned 29.
Right, so he's been advocating for this to be in Morrell County for the duration, but just slightly pulling a little bit more for Boardman. For good reasons, we were looking at South Morrell County, so he's been pulling for good reasons to look at Boardman. Previously, we were looking at South Morrell County. We did recently wrap up a purchase agreement on a piece of property that is in your package. So before we look at that, just for a moment. You have the proposal that I sent into the state that they approved. And I just want to highlight a few things. If you have a few minutes, not right now, read the first four paragraphs. The first paragraph's kind of dry. What we're doing. The second paragraph talks about the need, and I already touched on that. These are kids that have difficulty loving and haven't been loved. They're the rejects of society, they're struggling in their classrooms, they're not going to school. For whatever reason, they've been in 52 different foster care homes, they're born addicted to meth or heroin, or you name it. We're going to do all the good things that a facility should do like this, and the bulk of this document speaks to that. These are the rules and regulations that we're going to follow. Some people think that that's important. It is really important, I don't want to minimize it. But what CCS does differently is we inject everything that we do with intense care, compassion, and concern for the population that we're serving. That's what we're all about. So these kids are going to be loved to the best of their ability by substitute care providers. And I want to highlight that because that is no substitute for the importance of importance to getting them back home with the people that they're attached to. But while they're with us, we've got to do intensive therapy with their family back home, intensive therapy. That's where the real work is. They're with us, we need to, we need to care for them, we need to teach them healthy, good things, that's talked about in the fourth paragraph, and they need to have fun. These kids have not had fun. If you look at them. You know, they're definitely pretty unhealthy looking. They have pale skin, they're often pretty overweight, they haven't had a lot of exercise. I mean, when you study kids that are underloved and undernourished for emotional nourishment, they're, they're unhealthy. They already have co-occurring medical conditions at that young age. That's what we're going to focus on. So the rest of this narrative speaks to the rule. It's really important that you know that we follow the rule, but I don't want to talk about that. We're going to label kids that are having pathological behavior, because to be there, that's what's required, they have a diagnosis. But that diagnosis is the least important thing to me for what we're going to work on while the kid is there. But if I don't ever get the diagnosis, great, I'm not there to treat that. I'm there to treat the underlying causes that contributed to that kid of being there. I do want to state that on the second page, I didn't have time to update this today. So the staffing numbers are not correct on the, on the second page and on subsequent pages. So the, the second standalone document is the correct document for the staffing. This is the minimum number of staff that we would have at any given time at the facility, 18.4. I think it'll be more like 24 or 25 by the time we're all done. There are, as you can see, most of these staff are professional-level staff, they have bachelor's degrees, master's degrees. But that said, there are quite a few positions that just require a high school diploma. And the ability to pass a criminal history, and the ability to pass a criminal history background check. We pay well at CCS, we have good benefits. Some of you know the work that we already do here, we are able to attract people from within the area as well as without the area, as well as outside of the area. For our physicians. Not concerned about staffing. At the facility located in Boardman, I was concerned about that in South Morrell County. Also thoughtful about the neighborhood, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to miss words, I know that NIMBY is an issue in, in some places. The facility will look nice, if you haven't been up to Hepner, invite you to drive up there and look at Lakeview Heights, or if I come back and visit Lakeview again, I can bring you pictures. We only build and place facilities that look nice, that are desirable, that you would be okay with having in your backyard. We're not going to reduce the value of any property, if anything, we'll add to it. I did work with chief, or chief worked with me and helped find what we feel to be a good location for this, so that is the third freestanding document. Currently owned by George Harrison, although, like I said, we did just sign a purchase agreement with him. It's 1.9 acres. It's one-point-nine acres. If you're familiar with Boardman, you can see where this is. Kind of across the street from you, Matilla Electric. I can go on and on and on. And again, happy to come back and visit with you. Chief worked with Barry earlier. It's good to see Barry. I haven't seen him in a little while to make sure that the zoning was appropriate. You know, we'll continue to investigate that before we execute the final sale agreement. But we have retained an architect firm who has reviewed the city code. And at first pass, it looks like it will work. There it is in a nutshell. What questions do you have now, or what information would you like from me to bring back to you? What are your concerns, what are your fears, anxieties?
Councilwoman Norton.
Do you know when this is projected to be finished or start construction?
Yeah, we would like to start construction this summer, and it would take about a year.
You know, it's gonna take ten months for development. I think that's wonderful, wonderful, for our community and this side of the state. You're gonna be excited for the upcoming stage, sadly. Thank you.
Councilwoman Beagle.
Yes, I would like to see your architecture additions before you start construction, so we can be aware of parking, how your building will be situated.
I can email that tomorrow to Chief for Karen, and make it forwarded out to you.
That's Barry's position, so send it to Barry and I, and we'll see if it gets.
This is super exciting for me. I dealing with these age kids, I know exactly what you're talking about. I see these kids, I mean, we're talking sixth graders and below. Maybe to a fifth grader might be a better age. And to be able to approve something like this would be monumental, and I think it is something important that we should really think about doing. I, what are you asking, I guess is the question? Is it just permission to build here, or is that what it is, or? I guess I was trying to figure.
I wanted to give you information on the program, and I don't pardon my, pardon this statement, it's ignorance. I don't know if I should be asking for permission or if it's like, you know, all okay. I don't know that, but if I need to ask for permission, then I'm here to ask for permission. But I would think that what I just gave you tonight is not enough, if that's the case, and would wanna be coming back. But to, minimally, to provide you with as much information as you need to feel as comfortable as you can for the work that we're doing, to give you information about CCS, to provide you with any background on the kiddos that we'll be serving, on the need in the state. You know, somebody might ask, well, it fills up tomorrow, but what if the state has fifty of these facilities built over the next year, and then are we gonna have a vacant building? Well, if I were a city council member, that would be something that I might be concerned about. I mean, I can talk about that for the next five minutes, too, but to give you what you need, as much of what you need, the right information so that you feel comfortable about what's happening, and if you do need to approve it, all that, I'm trying.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm a hundred percent behind this, and my only question for you would be whether or not it proceeds. What can we do for you, and how do we help in other ways, in every way?
You just made me heart, my heart flutter. I like the movie Tom Hanks, or no, it's not Tom Hanks, it's Tom Cruise when he says, "You had me at hello." So, you know, the thing that I worry about the most is the NIMBY piece. You know, these kids aren't gonna be getting out. They're seven, eight, nine years old. They're not healthy. They're not gonna be scaling fences, although we will have a fence. You know, I'm gonna ask for two things. What information do I need to give you to help with questions that could come up in the community around the NIMBY issues, and are these kids dangerous? I mean, I'll be honest, there are some kids that have done some pretty bad things that will be in the facility. But you know, when you read about a nine-year-old that tries to attack his mom with a frying pan, like, you have concerns about the kid, but you're also wondering, what the hell? I'm sorry. You know, that's not, that's not typical. So you know that there's a whole host of issues that have contributed to that. So what information do you need? These kiddos won't be out and about in the community. They're not gonna be there for very long. Someone will just be there for three or four days, someone will be there for two or three months. But this isn't their forever home. But to the degree that the community, that they know that the community supports them, you know, people come by, read to them, or, you know, visit with them, or sign up to play some basketball with them, that's, you know, that's the stuff, when you were in high school, those people that went the extra mile make you feel supported, or make you feel like you were special, that's what these kiddos need right now. That's such an important thing. So that's a con.
Councilwoman Beagle.
I do have a question. I looked at your staff needs here, and I don't see any indication of an educator.
That'll be a contract that we have with the Morrell County School District. So that's the reason why they're almost as an LPE.
Okay, so you would take and have an educator come to your facility?
Yes.
Now, there are different age groups, so would you require more than a one-specific grade, say like first grade and fifth grade?
So there are rules that exist for Oregon. This is licensed, it'll be duly licensed, which will be unique in Oregon, both by the Oregon Health Authority as well as DHS, because we wanna be able to take kids from both systems. There are rules around education. They're referenced in here, but I'll email this tomorrow. Then, you know, I don't wanna convince words. The kids aren't gonna receive a full-time education as a reward if they're in a regular classroom. It's a modified schedule. So there's a certain amount of education that occurs each day, and then it's about an hour. Of instruction, and then followed by the residential associates.
Thank you.
Again, some are there for just a few days, some are there for a little bit longer. Those that are there for longer, we would be looking at having an adopted schedule for them. But they won't be integrated into the school. All the education we brought up, like.
Can I paraphrase for her?
You bet. Go ahead. You have the floor.
What she, she's been here before with different projects. What she's here for today is our support as a community to sign a really needed facility here. Because we don't have the authority to say she can't build here. I mean, just so that you're pretty clear on that, we don't care how many parking lots she has, spots she has. That's not, she needs community support. She wants that ahead of putting a ton more time in this. If Boardman says, "This is not the place. We will not support this." And so I think that's your decision, is to be, to let her know now. Not let her wait, like, buy property in six months from now, say, "You know, that was a great presentation you had for us that night, but, you know, we thought about it. We don't wanna do it." So I think that that's.
Where are you better?
I don't get one.
Chief Stoco, you have the floor.
So I would just reiterate what Karen is talking about, and I can tell you that the partnerships that we have with CCS are extremely valuable. We have a very good working relationship with their agency. They wanna be good partners, and they always have reached out to make sure that they're good partners, and that's another reason she's here. She wants to let you know that she wants to be a partner with the city in this process, and I can't tell you how important this issue is. I think you guys all grasp the idea, but I wanna tell you that we have kids that are ten, twelve years old, that not only are talking about killing themselves, but are killing themselves. And I can't tell you how hard that is to have to deal with. We can't have that. I just can't. I don't think people grasp the idea that these kids are killing themselves, and that they have these issues. But it's happening, folks. I'm telling you.
Happening in Boardman.
I've been there. So this is a great opportunity. You couldn't pick a better partner, is what I would say.
Sorry, if I just speak to that just for a second. You know what?
No, no, go ahead. You go ahead.
Okay, well.
I'm.
Like, I think I'm gonna get my eyes in. I can't quite hold your hand about that. You raised your hand, that was okay. I just, you know, periodically, there is, this is a higher level of care. So today is there a kid from Boardman that needs this level of care? I actually could ask her if she would come. Is that today? So if you think about this kiddo, right now, the closest place is Portland. Now, okay, sometimes these parents have been horrible to their kids, totally horrible, but that doesn't mean that they're still not loved, albeit in an unhealthy way. I mean, I ask any one of you to talk to a mom that's just more a child, like, you know, that mom's wishes and dad's for that child on that first day is that they're gonna be the president of the United States, they're gonna go and accomplish these great things, and that doesn't cease on they, too. So they, even though they might not know how to love, or they struggle with how they show it, they still, most of the time, want what's best for their kid, who might be active in an addiction or in a horrible relationship. So the kid needs this level of care, and off they go to Portland. You know, one of the families that we're talking about, they don't have the gas. They just hop in a car and go to Portland. We used to have a Greyhound stop here back in the day. We don't have that Greyhound stop. There's no Amtrak. So having, you know, experienced this on different levels, your kid goes to Portland, and the kid's not gonna be discouraged because you haven't shown up for family therapy. Well, go figure. You know, who are we punishing? I'm not quite sure sometimes. And you're supposed to be down there three times a week. Now, if you have a great job that has thick leads and vacation, well, then you're set. But if you don't have that job, and you're gonna have to take time off work, and then you're not gonna get paid for that time off work, and you're already struggling with how you're gonna put food on the table, you're making some choices. Am I gonna support my son, who's over in this facility, or am I gonna try to keep these kids here? And child welfare's not gonna be too happy if I don't have food out on the table. And these are decisions that are really, really, really challenging, and I don't mean to go on about it, but to have something like here in Morrell, like this in Morrell County, for these kiddos and the families in your community, albeit there may only be four or five kids like this a year, is unbelievable for the people that we're talking about.
So my question is, for like, if the community is able to help, and what I say, I mean, in like, can you sign up to be a reader? And if you do that, what do you have to have for background checks? I would hope you'd have that law for background.
We did a very thorough background check.
That's what I'm hoping for. So that's, that's all part of the program.
Yes, and you volunteer, just like the schools, you know, if you wanna volunteer in the schools. Although, we have two background checks, not this one. We go through the state of Oregon, but we have, we adopted about two years ago now a more stringent one that doesn't, in terms of the final letter allows fewer crimes than even the state does.
Well, I am a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I think the community would be willing.
Absolutely.
So we can all do.
Thank you. So I'll send some information to Barry and Karen tomorrow. Would you like me to come back in a couple months and give you an update on where we're at, what we're doing?
Please.
If you would like to vote, you know, that's all fine.
I don't think we're all.
I have a facility tour.
Yeah, facility tour. A facility here, awesome, we can do that. All right, well, you know, thank you again for, sometimes you don't know, you show up for a meeting like this, and you might be escorted out and moved out. So I appreciate the support now and ahead of time, and just, you know, thank you for being open to this. And special shout-out to Karen and to Chief. And I got to see some people that I haven't saw in a while, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. All right, after the presentation, do we have any public comment?
Hello, yes.
All right, line up, let's go. You have the floor.
All right, and so just kind of things are happening in the next month around town. January luncheon is on, January twentieth, it's our Chamber Live at noon. The Luncheon Learn with Kathy Height is gonna be a key to a high-performing culture, is July twenty-first at noon on Chamber Live. We have a number Chamber Live event coming up. It's the Boardman Childcare Opportunities in Boardman. It's gonna be a mix of Family First Childcare Center, Preschool Promise, and Yumato County, Yumato, Morrell County Head Start. And we're gonna be discussing, having a discussion on the childcare opportunities in Boardman, and people will be able to ask questions, and we'll get more information out to our public about having their kids come to the daycare. And we also have the awards banquet's coming around the corner. We have it scheduled for the first Saturday of March, which I think is March sixth. And we are asking everybody to nominate the People for Distinguished Citizens for 2020. You will find a Google form on our Facebook page and our website. You can nominate your person you feel that could meet those criteria for those awards. Nomination deadline is January fifteenth. We gotta get things done. It's gonna be a virtual hybrid platform this year, so we're gonna be doing some things a little different, and it's gonna take a little more time. Columbia Works, the Columbia Works internship program for 2021 is now open, and you're accepting applications for internship programs around Morrell County. You can find, near fifty internships are available. You can find that on the columbiworks.org page if you're interested in the, if you have a child that's knowing, or a college student knowing that they wanna, interested in an internship program. We had a grand opening this today in a ribbon-cutting for a sleep-in motel, and we did a virtual tour of the motel as well. You can find that on our Facebook page. We posted that today. And with BCDA, we have a community enhancement project survey out there floating around Facebook, and we were asking everybody that if they could give us their feedback on projects looking ahead for the next two years that BCDA could put on their priority list. After we had the survey, we will discuss it a little bit as a board, and then we will go and create a community Zoom meeting where we can have an opportunity to discuss those survey results with everybody and get some more feedback, and then we'll go back, the board will go back and decide the priority list for the next couple of years for the BCD projects. And we're still looking forward to having our Home Buyers Incentive Program and our Business Incentive, and things are looking busy already in our housing development. Applications are already coming in, so things are moving. Developments are happening around the community, and we're just happy to see the growth that we're getting. So that's what I have for tonight. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Awesome. Enjoy, guys.
Thank you, Tori. Is there anybody else that has any public comment that they would like to share? Having hearing nothing, we'll go to action items. System Development Charge waivers, SDC waivers. Who's, is that you? Who's that?
Well, I think that is, I think it's on your letter. I would address that.
Can I just pick up a five-minute recess?
Yes, I think, yeah.
Oh, yes, we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Because we never go this long.
We always.
All right, we're back from our five-minute recess. We're gonna go through other business. We're going to go through other business. We'll talk SDC waivers.
I think you need to postpone that until after you've had a chance to have a workshop.
Okay, copy that.
You can table it.
Okay, we'll table SDC waivers. We need to have the election of the council president. Our council president just left. Who was the previous one, right? Mr. Drago?
Well, he filled in. Brandon Hammond was the council president. Then when Brandon resigned, we just appointed.
No wonder he was all confused when I said, oh, I feel bad now.
Yeah, so we just said, okay, Lori, you're up. You're junior, you're it. And so you could appoint him now.
Okay, so we need to choose a council president. I need to hear some nominations for a council president. Yes.
I do nominate, Roy, you try to.
That's really funny. We have a motion and we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, that is great. That's what happens when you leave just a tad early. All right, we need to, moving on, we need to reappoint members of the Budget Committee for terms ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three. We have Ted Lawrence and Lisa Middlesworth. Do we just need to make a motion?
Yes, and they're both willing to serve.
And they're both willing to serve, so we need to make a motion.
So I'd like to reappoint Ted Lawrence and Lisa Middlesworth to the Budget Committee.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I think we'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Okay, we have a question. We have a discussion.
I have, on my list, I have Julie Deese also.
And she doesn't want to do it.
So she is declining, so we just have the two.
We, the budget, when you get down, you're going to appoint the budget officer, which will be Marta. And usually Marta is the one that tries to get somebody to do that on the budget.
So my question is.
It'll be vacant.
Thank you.
Well, and it's not vacant until when? Is it vacant in January?
Twelve thirty-one, one day only, yeah.
December.
Yes, so it's vacant.
She's been vacant for about five days.
Are there any more discussion we'd like to have on this before we go to a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, they are on. Next order of business is reappointment of planning commissioners for terms ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Zach Carisi, position number five, and Raggedon Tenex, position number four.
I'd like to move.
You'd like to move where?
No, I don't reappoint. I'm so moved.
Oh, you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move.
Okay, so we have a motion to reappoint Zach Carisi, position number five, and Raggedon Tenex, position number four. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, they are reappointed. Next order of business is appointment of twenty-one, twenty-two budget officer, Martha Barajas. I need a motion.
I'd like to move to appoint Martha Barajas.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Martha Barajas as a twenty-one, twenty-two budget officer. Is there a discussion?
I'll second.
We have a discussion. We have a second and now is our discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, she is reappointed. We need to let's catch up. Are you good? Okay. All right, the last piece we got here is our annual council workshop retreat. What do you have for us, Mr. Teddy Gru?
Well, I just wanted to say, in my notes I sent to you, we need to have one. We need to have one or two pretty quickly here.
Yes, we do.
And so I ask for you to look at your calendars. And so do you have an evening you want to spend? Or do you want to do a Saturday, the twenty-third? Because I think.
Saturday, twenty-third.
I think that if you would have an evening one in the beginning here, because what, I think what I, I think that tonight's meeting, it's, we need to, we need to go over zoning. I think there's enough about zoning that the new counselors and stuff may not know what that means. We can spend a half an hour, forty-five minutes on just zoning. And why that's important, because, you know, tonight, when we discussed David Jones, you know, he was asking for a zone change. But it, pretty quickly, he's in here saying, I'm going to do this, when like you said, you had nothing to hold him to that. I mean, so I think that those kind of things we need to know. I think that I'd like to introduce the staff to you and have them tell you about what their departments do. Because we usually do that kind of thing on the Saturday meeting. But there's, there's a lot to kind of go over and get everybody so they're pretty familiar with how things are going to be, so. Anyway, and if you want to meet on the twenty-third, I'm fine with that too. I can fill, I can fill.
I wonder if we could, I know everyone's busy, but maybe get the staff stuff done. Maybe so we don't take the whole Saturday. I mean, you take the whole Saturday, but then we lose a piece. I mean, if you take the staff out of it, then you've got another two hours or an hour and a half to do other stuff for the six to eight hours or whatever.
Right.
The retreat is.
I kind of would like to piggyback on that. It'd be nice to do the staffing piece in the evening, one evening, like maybe in a couple of weeks on a Tuesday night. And then on Saturday, maybe then somebody threw around the date of the twenty-third. Maybe even get like a mini tour.
I would really like a fan tour. Well, COVID is going to be the option or obstacle for us. Because as soon as I can get you on a bus, we're going on a tour. And that tour can take, I can spend a few, four hours, or five. I mean, I'm not kidding you, that, you know, there is a lot to see in Boardman that you don't know. You know, I mean, just, it's nice to know about how the city operates. And, and I think that we can probably get a bus. I don't know how big it is. So if we all, if we don't get COVID.
Well, I got the shot, so hopefully I'm protected.
Oh, good for you.
Yeah, I got it today.
In February, maybe we can have a bus tour. So anyway, let me know what dates you want to meet and I'll prepare.
Tuesdays are bad days for me.
Tuesdays are?
They really are. Now, I'm just one person. I can always get out of my firefighter duties. But Tuesdays are a bad day for me.
Well, okay, city councils always are going to be the first.
And I made that commitment.
But if, you know, we can easily meet on a, like a Thursday or something, I mean.
Thursdays aren't bad. I mean, Tuesday is just Tuesday. It's a bad day for me. And if the other weekdays are bad, maybe we could hammer it out in a full Saturday.
I tried to, when, when we do a Saturday one, I'm just going to go on past experiences. Sometimes I've had somebody come in and speak to you about doing a strategic plan and those kind of things. I've had, you know, sometimes we just sit and work on our own. I mean, we know what our goals should be for this coming year and we try to do that. We, we used to try and go to the seniors for breakfast. So we tried to have it that first Saturday of the month. And we'd go have breakfast together. Come over here and get to work and then we'd have lunch. And we always tried to be gone by one thirty or two. I mean, two is the limit. And if you didn't want to meet.
I could deal with two. I was thinking like five because I do believe that's what we had a long time ago. It was like all day.
You can't, there's a limit to how much that you can absorb and that you want to. I mean, there's just a limit, so, yeah. So anyway, think about, if you want to have a, like a, like say on the fourteenth, if you wanted to have a, and we could do it by Zoom if you wanted to. I'd really like for you to come here, but I don't want to push my luck either. But, you know, like I said, we can, we can go over how the zoning works and why you would, why it's important to have certain areas of the community zoned a certain way. And that, you know, I mean, there's a lot about zoning that we could, and I'd say the staff. We've got a good staff, so. Okay, I'll quit talking and now let's go to the next thing.
Okay.
And then you tell me what you want.
Tell you what date?
Yeah.
What date do we want?
I am very flexible.
I'm pretty flexible too on a Saturday. At least, at least in the month of January, I'm really pretty flexible.
I think it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Is it twenty-third, Thursday?
Saturday.
Saturday?
It's a Saturday and it's a Saturday after the, you know, there's a three-day holiday the week before Martin just came. So, and the twenty-third would be. Okay, then let's just plan. Okay, so now, do you want to do a Zoom meeting and do the, because part of, part of what we used to do on Saturday was I would have the staff come in person and like you say, introduce themselves, talk about their, their department. And then, you know, if they seen things that were coming up that they needed to, that they really wanted to share with you, like, gosh, I really need a new pickup this year.
I got a bunch to sell yet.
So anyway.
So do we want to go to the twenty-third? January twenty-third?
Okay, let's go to the twenty-third.
Okay.
And then we'll do whatever next. I'll figure out an agenda and send it out.
Can we look at the twenty, is the twenty-first, that Thursday, is that a good night for meeting the staff so that we don't have to do the meet the staff at the same time to do the workshop?
I think you're asking a lot for two days.
In the same week, Mr. Beagle, and three times in one month?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want you to get hurt in your retirement or anything.
You'd be the first to know.
Okay, let's just go for the twenty-third.
Okay, we'll go for the twenty-third, Mr. Beagle.
I'll fill it up and then whenever we don't get done.
Question, is there any reason why the sixteen wouldn't work?
Because it's the beginning of the three-day weekend. And I didn't, and I just assumed people. But I don't care. Three-day weekends are.
No, I get it.
Well, I think we should, is eight too early? Eight-thirty would be the.
Because we're thinking eight, so you're thinking eight to two?
Yeah.
Eight, eight's a good time for me.
I think most of us are used to being up and about by eight, so, yeah.
Okay, eight to two?
Yeah.
Can you correct that some much?
Who?
I'll figure that out. And because it's going to, this time, it's going to have to be box lunch.
I was thinking River Lodge, maybe, because they get those sandwiches.
Okay. Okay, having a retreat scheduled for Saturday, the twenty-third, make two. Are we, document signatures? That's what I have on my agenda.
I have one signature and it's just for Katie. I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Other than, everybody needs to go sign their stuff for them. But they need to sign.
They're done. So what do we have to sign?
You already did it.
Done. Nothing. All right, so I think the next part where do we go? I get to keep this?
No, you have to sign it.
Do I get a copy? Go to my scrapbook.
Yeah, don't they?
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, I want it on the special paper though.
No, that was very nice. All right, so we got the signature. Police report.
Okay, so I'll give you a little bit of a history about the report. So what I'm going to tell you is, this is a report that if you're looking at the numbers and think they're one hundred percent accurate, I can tell you they're not. Our report system, the way it works, we may have an incident called in as a speeding complaint and it turns into DUI. So if things change, is that report will shoot the process that can be approved. So that kind of changes the way they come out on the report. Also, for example, on citations, I can tell you, we issued more than one citation this last month. But because of COVID and health issues, my office manager isn't here to input those. So those numbers aren't going to be accurate. I promise you, they're not accurate. So just understand, this is kind of a broad example of a report of what happens. Typically, at the end of the year, I try to tally our final results and bring those before the council. It depends on how things were going last year, obviously, with a bit of a stretch, so. Anyway, so having said that, are there any questions about this report?
Mr. May, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Beagle, you have the floor.
I'm looking at your total incidences and I see a pattern from May through August of over three hundred. September was a drop and then we went back up and off COVID. Can you attribute that to one incident or one particular? No, okay.
Let me say that if you're trying to figure out a pattern with these numbers, it's simply not, I mean, there's so many things that come into the equation. Weather is one of them, staffing levels is another, because a lot of those numbers are driven by how many staff I have. Right now, for example, I have two officers that are on light duty that can't work out on the road. So that affects our numbers. Obviously, winter months tend to be a little bit slower, but that's not always true because we get more bird-aging during holidays, we get more DUIs, more alcohol-related offenses, domestic violations, and so on. There's several things that come into these numbers. So to try to project, we use them as guidance, but there is no one specific thing to track.
I was looking at July. Your misdemeanors and felonies are significantly higher during that month than any other that you've got here. I just thought, well, maybe Fourth of July celebration, maybe, the heat, maybe.
No, again, staffing issues. I can tell you that I think in the month of July, my detective who recently was appointed as a detective probably got to work that month on cases rather than cover shifts because of being shorthanded. We just had an officer that graduated from the academy who just barely got out on her own. So all those things really contribute to what's going on.
So when do you propose you'll have a better number of that last year?
I, to be honest with you, I don't know. I mean, obviously, I've got to get staffing back to get the numbers in full correctly. I'm not sure what they are on that. COVID has been kind of a challenge with that kind of stuff. The numbers aren't going to be far from this, but they are going to be different. They're going to be close.
Thank you, too.
Yeah. Anything else? Other projects that we're working on, obviously, we've had to come up with OSHA required guidance for staffing levels. That has been a nightmare. There hasn't been a lot of templates to use. We've had to devise our own for first responders and it's a lot more in-depth than everybody else. So Captain Dieter's been working extremely hard. We've been trying to get the training that we're required to have. So again, it's eaten up a lot of our time. Uh, we are currently, and have been for the last three years, working on our state accreditation. Uh, again, as staffing lo-, staffing levels allow, they get to work on that accreditation stuff. Uh, it's not a priority, so it gets put to the back burner, um, but we are, we were hoping to finish this year, it's just not gonna happen. We wanted to have it done by the end of this year, numbers just don't look like they're there yet. I, I would remind everybody that, uh, um, people are still out doing their Christmas shopping, um, at your expense. So make sure you're locking your doors and your cars, uh, they're, they're here, and, uh, I, I, unfortunately, uh, with the passing of Senate Bill one-ten, uh, the legalization of narcotics, we have seen already, uh, already experienced an increase in the amount of people coming to Oregon from other states, because they can use their controlled substance through here. And we have already been dealing with them, so no, it's, our, our homeless population is gonna increase, our mental health, behavior, health issues are going to increase, um, and it, it, that's all I did yesterday. The whole day was mental health and drugs. So I think I got home eight or nine o'clock last night, so, um, they're here. So, uh, something to talk about, I guess, at our retreat, that would be a, uh, a discussion to probably bring up, but, uh, aside from that, uh, we're moving forward, um, providing twenty-four-hour day, seven-day week coverage.
Yes.
What accreditation are you working with?
We're trying to get, uh, Oregon Accreditation Alliance, so, um, basically, the accreditation standards are a best practice standard across the state. There's a, a, a whole bunch of, of requirements you have to meet to hit those best practices, and, uh, it's time-consuming, cause we're, we have to take our policy, then we have to pull uh, examples of how that, we've used that policy and that process of how it's worked, and then we have to submit that to the Accreditation Alliance, they have to review all of this. Uh, it's a, it's a thousand plus different places we've gotta do all this, so, um, when we get that accreditation, and we will, um, we are following the best state standards and practices, uh, uh, that, that we can. Um, and it, it, what it does, it makes sure we're doing it right, and so we're pretty happy about that. Um, it is a, it, it is a, a, a big goal, it's not common for smaller agencies to do this, just because it's, there's so much to make it happen, but, um, we're dedicated to it, and, uh, we're, we're excited, cause we do follow the best practices. I won't take up any more of your time since we're running on nine-thirty, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Building Department report. That would be Glenn, right?
Hey, oops, I'm here.
Hey, welcome.
Okay, so the most exciting thing that has happened is that we have finally hired a plumbing inspector. His first day was today, very respected in the, in the plumbing community, um, he's been a plumbing contractor in this area for fifty-some years, so he knows everybody. I don't know how to turn my camera on, hang on, she's gonna try to figure out how to turn my camera on. So, that's exciting. Uh, we've been working with Gillum County. There we go. Thanks, Chief. To provide, uh, building inspection services for Gillum County. We've been working on it for quite a while, I sent back our final draft, and hopefully, with very few changes, hopefully, they'll, they'll, everybody else will agree, we'll sign that, we'll start providing services for Gillum County. So RPDX program, RPDX campus here in Boardman, I thought I'd give you a little bit of that, they've got one and a half buildings done. Um, they started on the third building, they'll be building four buildings total. So, that's a pretty standard campus for Amazon, it is, is four buildings per campus. Uh, we finally got the sidewalk in for apartment apartments, that took quite a while, but that happened just last month, I think. Uh, the Neil Early Learning Center addition, got their final approval about three weeks ago, so they're already starting to provide daycare services in that building and everything. Uh, the sleep-in, like Tori mentioned, they do have a temporary certificate of occupancy, they're still not done with the swimming pool. It, that project was amazingly slow. If you want more information, I, I'll do it out of the public eye. Um, now the fam- Family Dollar, which is coming to town, they're gonna submit applications probably this week or next. And I don't, if you don't know, they're gonna go right across the street from City Hall. Uh, and then, if you look on the last page of your packet, I've got a Building Department report, and I really wanted just, if you, if you take a look at it, I wanted to point out and highlight the total new home construction in Boardman for twenty-twenty, was twenty-seven new homes. Um, that's a, that's awesome, I think. That's it, do you have any questions?
I.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Prophet has a question, you have the floor.
Glenn, um, I was wondering, I was looking at your chart from earlier, and I was wondering if any of these moral counties were inside the Boardman growth boundaries, the urban growth boundary for Boardman? Or if they were?
That's a good question, I don't know. I'll find out for you, though.
Pretty high number for Hepner-I-O, Lexington, so I just was curious if some, a large portion of this is inside our urban growth boundary.
I know two or three for sure, uh, there's a couple of new houses going, well, actually, I'm not real sure where the urban growth boundaries are, but we've got two new houses going in, um, on Garrison Lane. Uh, we've got one going on i- in, uh, what is the name of that, Paul Smith, on the south side of Coonsy. Um, that's all I can think of off the top of my head.
Out of twelve, that would drop in with it. So I just was curious if that, if they were inside our urban growth boundary, and if that was more of a.
I'll find out.
Two moral county in general.
I'll find out, I'll get back to you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Glenn.
Absolutely, thank you.
Committee reports. I don't know what that is.
Well, that would be if you were on the Christmas committee, you would say, I had my, we put up the decorations and we have taken them down.
Okay, so the person who was on the committee at Christmas put them up and put them down.
I did nothing. Well, I, I did neither.
So what?
That's his job next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we have lots of money to pay somebody to do that. I'm sure we could find some people to, we could easily pay to do that.
But no, if, we, we, we really don't have too many appointed committees, I mean, like virtually none, and so, yeah, that's, but it's always on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so I could pretty much look at it, we have nothing on there, so there's nothing for the committee, other than the Christmas lights came down.
No, I was just giving you.
Last year, there was a little bit more, but this year, a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Oh, it's your attorney, Gary.
Oh, it's my attorney. So when I, I, I wrote you the, I write, I write you the letter.
Yep, you wrote us a letter.
And, um, I just tried to bring you up to date on some of the things that I think are go-, that are going on in town that you need to be aware of. Like I said, the when we were helping, when they was going to rent, um, some of the office space over in the VMCC building that we have, and I, I don't wanna forget, we need to get a sign over there that says Annex something, I don't care what it says, but we, we need a sign. But anyway, they're gonna, they're gonna move in, because they are, with COVID, and everybody happens spaced out, they need more space.
So do you just go and buy yourself a sign, just order it, is that all you have to do?
Yeah, yeah, we just, yeah.
So that's in your going discretion, you can just order a sign?
Yeah, I just have to.
You're just mentally caught now, loud saying you have to buy a sign, okay.
No, yeah.
Not something we have to do?
No, no, you don't have to, no.
Okay, sounds good, go ahead and do it.
Well, that was more for, for the.
That's your job?
I got it.
Your completion date was estimated when?
You just don't know what goes on with the eye contact.
That's fine with me, I'm sure I'll figure it out here pretty quick.
Anyway, uh, Marta is, you know, home, and the baby's still in the hospital, so she's, you know, commuting twice a day to the Tri-Cities, and I think is hoping, the baby's doing pretty well, she, you know, doesn't, isn't on anything but the feeding tube whenever she, you know, gets too excited and has trouble feeding, so, so things are progressing there. Like I said, we asked Tom to come back and fill in like one day a week or two to keep up with the house payables, so that it, uh, and Heather's back to work this week, so.
I know, we got a lot of emails today.
There we go.
Just teasing, thank you.
At least you know I'm here.
Yes.
Well, we're trying to get you out, trying to get you all cut up.
All kinds of additions to the agenda. That's okay. I got them yesterday, now I got more today.
Well, after we once did your emails, straightened out.
I'm telling you, it was like I had a whole book.
Yeah.
And then I get this, oh, here's another little page, just.
Oh, by the way, so, and I, I mentioned that we're putting, the reader board uptown has, has officially.
Died?
Died, yeah.
Did we decide where, I, what, I know that the city council was talking about where to put it before, was there a decision on where they wanted?
We're gonna put it right over, it, almost like in front of the Napa store, you'll see if you, it's hard to tell, but there's a pole, they installed the pole last week, the top part will be here in a couple of weeks.
Oh, so the city, the past, the city council already proved what they were getting?
No.
Why wouldn't we? We know, I, I kinda like to know what it was, I mean, I'm not, wasn't on it, but what kind of sign, I mean, is electronic, what kind of sign did you get?
It's a reader board sign, it's going to look like, uh, if you go through Irigen, but it's gonna look a lot like the one at the Bank of Eau.
Okay, all right, it's just not something that looks teasing?
It will not have the tile look, it will have the same kind of a, there's a pole over there now, and then they will build a metal box like the Bank of Eau has.
Okay.
And then the top part will be lighted, and the very top part, I think's gonna say, I can't decide, I can't remember what it says, welcome to Boardman, or city of Boardman, but it will have a, be lighted, and then the reader board part will be, you know, so it.
Double-sided?
Yes, double-sided.
It's probably remote-controlled, so it could be done at the, here.
Well, and it's gonna have a way nicer program.
Okay, no, it's just gonna be, it, it's not like the, the cheapest thing we could get, but it's a good one.
No, the draft pictures, they presented.
I never saw them, so I, I mean, that was, obviously, it was before I started watching.
Yeah.
That would be fine, I mean, I was just curious, I, I just, I just didn't know there was a spot already chosen, I, I missed all that, so.
And, so eventually, we'll tear down the one up on the corner, and that'll be the end of that problem, because people always said that it was, you know.
I like that you can see it on the road, um, to see it when you're driving by, I was hoping that it would be somewhere around there, so it, it's the only part, I hope they can find a place to stop a reader, probably the library.
I think the library and the grocery store.
Absolutely.
And of course, the Napa store.
And it might be, it would be the new family store coming in.
And they can read it from right there?
Yeah.
I think there's gonna be more stock traffic to be able to read this one.
Good, yeah.
You know, hopefully. What else did I tell you?
That sign should be in by when?
They're hoping by the end of the month.
Sweet.
They. Yeah.
Is that what, that's that's really extremely helpful to the community, I think that, that's really good.
Well, and we're, part of the reason we're doing it right this minute is because we can put it on our COVID money, because, you know, if it was working, we would be saying things about COVID, go out and get your, you know,
shots could be tossed here, and all organizations.
Yeah, and, you know, wear your mask so your kids can go to school, all those kinda things. So, we've really missed not having the reader board, I mean, I don't know how the people in town feel about it, but I know as a staff, you know.
I think that was gone, that it died, I, I should say it died. I sat there and read it.
I don't know how many gas stations, yeah, when you get in gas, you sit and read it.
I wanna see what the city had to say, or anybody else had to say, cause it was a good public, if you needed anything, that you could call up, and I hope it's still the same thing, hey, I would like to announce whatever, you know, yada, 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 and.
Well, and not, not everybody is a Facebook person, so, you know, that's kind of the other option there, so that's good. And I, I talked about that if you see anybody from independent transport, you know, they were nice enough to take out garbage potties when we were pretty darn desperate that day, cause we've been, that area had been out of water, we had told them they were gonna be out of water that day, but we didn't anticipate that it would last until midnight. So, so, you know, if you're out of water and you're prepared to spend a couple, three hours out of water, when I'm, at back at your door after you've been out an eight hours, and you still probably have another eight to go, so they hurried out with portable bodies, and we took water out to the doors and stuff. I mentioned to you how much money we got from this, from Boardman's, which is double what we had last year, so that's a nice thing. PDF fast, we have finished the broadband, and because you're new, this, um, BCDA was putting in broadband in Boardman, there, there was a grant available, so we applied for it in the city's name and received it, so the BCDA has been paying for the installation, then we will, BCDA will bill the city, because the city's been receiving the money. And we'll, you know, that was enough money, like, I think that, that we're hoping now that we can go a little farther out of the city limits and try to, you know, cause that's, that's our goal, is try to cover as much of the area with broadband as we can. And that's been, so they've got all, everything, and now they're, they'll just start hooking up people.
I'm waiting for the company to call me.
No, here's what you're gonna do.
I already got it on the, I already called them, and they already gave me a quote, supposed to be starting already, but obviously.
Right.
I got my name in, and they gave me the quote.
Well, and tell people to call, you know, put your name in, and then they'll, you know, come around and try to get you up, cause they, they really wanna get that done.
It just left in twenty-four hours, can you get that? I made someone call, and the guy was there with my thing, so.
They haven't done that yet, they haven't been down my street hooking people up yet.
No, cause he's over on the fiber optic.
I'm on the fiber optic side.
And, yeah, I'm not sure how that.
But you might be fiber optic too.
No, he's, he's not.
They cook the cable under there.
I I don't know, I think she's, um.
Tower.
I, in your packet was the SDC things, and we'll have that again in the, when we have the workshop, but I just wanted you to be familiar with how little we had taken in until the last couple of years, when we had bigger projects come to town, I think, and. And the other thing is, I wanna say, and I don't know who's still on there that might be listening, but
I don't know.
This, this the city staff are not complainers, I just want you to understand that. That I don't care what's going on, they're working and they're working hard, and I'm gonna give you an example. Heather left on October fifteenth, and just now she's been, so she was gone three months old. Then, pretty. Then pretty promptly Jackie came down with COVID on November the twenty-seventh and came back on December twenty-first. So that's an area. Then Marta had the baby December seventh and has not returned. And in all of that, I decided to have shingles and not be well. And so I was gone for, you know, three weeks. The person that showed up every day was Toni Kline. Every single day, she's here. She's never complaining. She's always polite and kind to your, your customers. And, and by the way, had to learn a lot of new tasks. She is not the minute taker. That's not her position here. You know, so she had to learn to how to do minutes. She had to learn how to do the Zoom thing. And so I think if you are looking to say good job to somebody that actually works for the city that has stepped up way beyond what our expectations and their job description would be. Toni has done that this, this, this last half a year. It has been, it has been incredibly hard to get things done and get it all together, you know, because, so, that's it. Go on, go on.
Is that everyone?
I just wanted.
No, I was talking to the city manager.
I have a question for you, Ken. Can you tell us about, and maybe not tonight, but OCDC?
Oh. Yeah, let's not talk about that tonight, but I will mention it at the.
Yes, I would like to hear about that.
Yeah, I bet you would. I would, actually.
Thank you, Karen. We're at the point for counselors. And Mr. Bigel said he had something we'd like to share. You have the floor, Mr. Bigel.
Thank you. If you look at the ordinance establishing council rules, there's section one authority, one point one, where it mentions section fourteen and it refers to the council shall adopt rules for government. It should be thirteen and not fourteen. That's an administrative change that needs to be reflected.
Are you talking about the council rules that I said you asked?
Yes, ma'am. You got the wrong number in there. It should be thirteen and not fourteen. Also, another item that's administrated, Sandy Thompson is no longer our mayor and it is a alfeaper. That needs to be updated on the cover sheet that he incorporated, the Boardman incorporation. He's the term mayor. Well, it's, I'm just saying, it needs to be updated. And I would request that when someone from the city call publishes a letter that they need to have it edited or grammatical there. Because we are a professional organization and no one is an idiot in this organization. We need to put forth a professional document for the public.
Which document are you referring to? The ones you're just, the ones you're just talking or the public notice?
Anything that comes out of City Hall or from the council, it needs to be reflective of professional.
I got you.
Okay, I'm gonna speak up here now. If you want me to send you my notes and you can edit them or track your grammar or whatever you like. But I have said to the councils always before, grammar and writing are not my best thing.
I understand that.
And I'm not gonna spend a day or two days trying to correct the punctuation. Now, if you would like part of that job, I'd be more than happy to send it to you and you can do it. But.
Well, I think that if we are a professional organization and it goes out to the public.
It does not go to the public. This only goes to the city council.
What I'm requesting, Karen, is anything that goes out to the public, it needs to be a professional product.
Are you the public?
I am. I represent.
Then, then maybe at the work session, we need to have a real look at my job description and how I need to, what my grammar and punctuation and stuff needs to be in a public setting. Because I have told everybody, when I took this job, you hired me to sell Boardman. You didn't hire me as the typist. You didn't hire me. That's my job, is selling Boardman. Keeping things running, keeping everybody smooth along. And I am just not going to, you're lucky that I get the time to, because I always say, read my notes just like I'm talking. Like I never took a breath. I don't put any punctuation. I just sit and type. And you can punctuate. And so I cannot, I can be happy to not do that. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to not send that out and do a verbal report.
So, Mr. Bigel, was your concern about her letter that she?
No, no, I'm saying documents that we post for the public to view.
So do you have something specific that you're?
No, I, I'm, I'm just saying, like, like when we have, when we have corrections that we need to make that go out to the public, say for like the minutes, that's a public document that they get to read, is it not?
Right, and it's posted up with.
Yeah, that, that's the type of thing that I'm referring to. It needs to be professional.
Right, and I agree with that. Is there something that's not professional?
I, I mentioned the two correction letters. That need to be, that need to be corrected.
But that, that was, that was also hold too. I think that was during Lila, was that the one that Lila Philambeck had written?
I believe so.
That's the, oh, the.
That's how, that shows how old that was. So if any, I think they're referring to, then we might need to just update some of that stuff.
Yeah, I'm not referring to the letter that you sent me.
That's good.
No, I'm not referring to that. That doesn't go out to the Joe Globe on the street. Or, or access via social media.
And most of the time, I really ask you not to share it. This is what, this is the things that we normally are just doing that you need to know.
Okay, I understand that, but things that go to the public.
Yes, and I agree with that.
That needs to look professional.
And I, and I know that when Lila was here, we usually ask if you've seen something that you, if we sent you the packet.
Right.
And you've seen something in the minutes that was not correct, if you will call us and let us know, we'll correct it before the, before the minutes are approved.
And I will do that when I, when I get it and the amount of time that I can actually read through it, which I understand. I got it yesterday and I went through it and I just saw a couple.
This meeting was a little different.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, no, we'll get the change of flowing here too. I think that. How are you feeling about coming into the council chambers?
How do I feel? I personally don't have a problem with it. One, I, I feel like I've able to social distance and I don't have any concerns for doing this. But I also respect other people who might have those concerns.
Yeah, well, and I don't think we can let the general public get.
No, now I'm not sure we're there that far accounting yet as far as that. Our space is gonna hold so much anyway. And so I don't have a problem coming, but any individuals who might. Are there any other concerns for council members? Because I only have one thing as a, as the mayor. It, it has to do with the translations of documents that go to the public, like public notices, anything on social media is, is there a reason why our public notices are not translated in Spanish and, and side by side near English? I, I was just curious.
No, I don't know. I agree. And I, we've never, we've just never had, we never had the ability, but now I have a number of employees, like when Marta's working, I, you know, I think she can, and I, I don't know. I'm not a computer savvy person.
Google Translate does a very good job. And if you have a Spanish speaker that flips over the Google Translate, you can really just get those little innuendos or those, whatever you call, they can finalize it. But I really think that anything, our public notices, anything to the public on social media, I think we should really mirror our other agencies out there on putting this into, into Spanish. I think translating into Spanish would really, really, would say a lot to our community as far as the city. That, that was the only thing that I, so I would really like to see that start happening.
I think all public notices, for sure, those kinds of things need to be in Spanish.
So I, I saw that we put it in four places. I've only seen two, but I know there's four because it said that it's posted in four, so. But if we could just have one side and I'm side and I've seen it, actually, I know three because I saw it at the bank. I saw it at the post office and I saw it at the grocery store. Those are the three that I saw.
I think that, I think the website will take some room.
Oh, I, I'm just, not, the website obviously takes, but if it was put on Facebook?
We don't do Facebook.
Wonder who public, oh, okay, so I saw the Facebook of a public notice once. And it was just, but we didn't do it in Spanish. It was just the English one. Somebody had.
Snapshoted and put it on there because we don't, as a city, we do not have a Facebook.
It was actually shared by a city employee. So that, that, I detect. So that was the.
Because I, I will tell you that the city does not run on Facebook. I mean, that's absolutely, if you, if you hear something and you want to know, you need to.
It might have been on the Boardman community page that that's where it's.
Oh, okay. No, we just, we, we try, we post what we, is official on the website, but.
But if we post, if we post a public notice on the website, it should be translated in Spanish on the website. If it's posted on the public, we should really try to have it in Spanish as well. That's all I'm saying. That's a great start for me.
Okay, good job. And I'm sorry, I was out of line with you.
No.
Water rolls off my back.
She got that one.
Well, no. Okay, I, some of you know me and some of you don't. But there's, there's never going to be a doubt in your mind how I feel. I mean, I mean, I, I can't flower it up. I can't, I mean, it just isn't. So if you want the flowery person.
I remember you from two thousand, two thousand and four when we hit the park, so.
Yep, I've never been to Flower.
Is there anybody else? Then I therefore moved that this meeting be adjourned at, what have we got? Nine fifty-three. I'm on the bank. So, go ahead.